Great to see everyone tonight. Good evening. It's five thirty on Wednesday, January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, and this regular meeting of the Sandpoint City Council is now called to order in the council chambers at City Hall, one, one, two, three, West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. Roll call for the record. I am Mayor Jeremy Grimm, presiding, also President or Council President Jason Welker, Councilors Deb Rule, Justin Dick, Kyle Schreiber, and Pam Duquette. Council Joe Espiro is absent. We understand he's under the weather and we wish him our best. Under the city's adopted Code of Ethics and Civility as the Presiding Officer, I'm to identify the law enforcement personnel in the back of the room. That is Police Chief Corey Coon. Please behave yourselves. Next, Pledge of Allegiance. I'll lead. If everyone will please stand, we will recite the pledge. Ready, set, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next on the agenda is announcements and reports. I'll start with my announcements and then move on to council. It's been a, it's been a wonderful, I think, nine days. I've been at City Hall. I can't thank the staff enough for the onboarding and the deluge of information that they have provided to me. It was about sixty-five hours at City Hall last week, which was a lot, but I'm starting to fill my nooks and crannies. So thanks to everyone who made that possible and look forward to working with you. Couple reminders to the public first, big storm out there. If you haven't lived here long, this is a bigger one than we usually get. Thanks to Chet and the crew first and foremost, and just a reminder to the public, I'm absolutely amazed at the compliance on the odd side parking. So great job, City of Sandpoint. But a reminder that even if you're on the even side, a vehicle does need to be removed or moved so they can clean the streets after forty-eight hours. So please attend to that. No one likes big frozen ice blocks in the middle of the road. Beyond that, if you do have sidewalks in front of your property, please remember that's your responsibility to clear those. And if you happen to have ramps on the corners, that is also your responsibility. And then finally, related to snow, if you have a hydrant near your house, please be aware. And if you have the capacity, please try to shovel around three feet around that hydrant so our fine firefighters can access that if they need to. Next, just a quick update for council and the public. We did some interviews last week. I cannot believe the quality of the applicants for our Recreation Superintendent. It's Jason Wiley's former position. The candidates all had master's degrees in recreation and it was, there was no bad choice. We've narrowed it down to two and are performing background checks and expect to make an offer very shortly. So I know Kami in the Parks Department is thrilled with that because she's juggling a lot right now. Also advertised for a Public Works Director, which went out last Friday. So we will see what kind of response we get. And in keeping with my campaign pledge, we had a headhunter that we were paying significant sums of money to try to fill that position. I paused that and we're going to try to do it in-house. So it's on all the various job sites on our website, on my LinkedIn. And if anyone knows of a engineer who wants to be a Public Works Director, please send them our way. Next, there's a need, one of our favorite subjects for the public. I'm going to put this on Jane Fritz and others. We were talking about it's already goose time again, folks. So you know, if you haven't been here long enough, you know, we've tried a lot of things. There's a lot of differing opinions on how we solve this challenge, but I know there's a lot of passionate anti-fatal solutionists out there. So if anyone wants to participate in that discussion and potentially be boots on the ground to help harass or otherwise remove the geese, please let Cassidy City Hall know and we'll put you on a list and I'll be calling you up. And then finally, I'll be going down to Boise next Thursday. There's the Association of Idaho Cities Elected Presentation Day. We go over legislation that's pending and meet our representatives. So it'll be down and back Thursday. And that's about it, except I want to just inform council, there's going to be a bit of a new process tonight. I've asked everyone who has significant responsibilities in the city, our staff, to come give a staff report. It's going to be a short introduction. It's going to cover what they're working on presently, what they're working on in the near term, and it will be an opportunity for council to interact directly with the very capable staff we have, unfiltered, to hear directly what is happening in the city. I hope you enjoy it and it's something I want to continue and appreciate staff being here for that. So with that, I'll turn it down over to council for any council announcements.
It's snowing.
Councilwoman Duquette.
Mr. Mayor.
Sorry. Thank you for recognizing me.
I have a couple items. First of all, I'd like to congratulate our local land trust, Knixu Land Trust. As of three thirty PM yesterday, they reopened the Pine Street Sled Hill after almost five years of that property being closed to the public. It was a, around a two point two five million dollar fundraising campaign and grant writing campaign that allowed KLT to purchase that property from the Weiss family, which had for decades opened it and plowed the bottom of the hill for the public to use. And last night they cut the ribbon and kids flooded onto the sled hill. And to celebrate Dr. Becky Meyer canceled school today. So all the kids could go could go sledding. And it's really exciting to have that property open forty-eight acres. There's, they're working on an amazing master plan for that property right now to incorporate it into the greater Pine Street Woods and Syringa Recreation, you know, open space. So I encourage you to take your kids, take your grandkids out to Pine Street Sled Hill the next week. It's going to have fantastic coverage after the recent snowstorms. Real gift for the community from KLT. Secondly, I would like to ask council to consider removing item eight, or sorry, postponing item eight E from tonight's agenda. This was a, an agenda item requested by Councilman I Spuro. So he asked that we postpone that topic for the following meeting and with I would request that we do that. Do we have?
Council in support of that?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, that's, that's it for me. Thank you.
Any other counsel?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, real quick. As of just a couple of weeks ago, I finished up seven years as the President of the Bonner General Health Foundation. Were they or are the charitable organization for the hospital? We are coming up on February third, our sixteenth annual heart ball. It is our largest fundraiser for the hospital. And I'm happy to announce that we are officially sold out. This year's a very special one too. Some of you may know Jack Parker, who passed away in two thousand twenty-three as a Sandpoint legend. He was instrumental in making sure that the hospital got brought to this community and built in this community. He was a board member of the hospital for over fifty years. He was also a charter member of the Elks Club as well as the Sandpoint Rotary Club. So we're going to do it in honor of him. This year's proceeds will go to continue to fight our efforts, our efforts to fight cancer. And the only way to do that is through early detection. So this year, the proceeds are going to go to purchasing a second endoscope. It's a device with many roles, including detection of colon, esophagus, and stomach cancer, polyps, tumors, inflammation, ulcers, and it'll be shared across multiple different departments. The addition of the new endoscope will give BGH staff the ability to see and screen more of our community members while also freeing up hospital departments to conduct more patient visits and surgeries. The efficiency that'll be created by the second endoscope through BAGH will create better patient care and ultimately to better outcomes. So even though we are sold out, you could still make a difference if by going on to the website, www.bonnergeneral.org. You'll see it right there on the front page. And if you have anything to donate, please help out. And again, like I said, help us honor Jack Parker and continue our efforts to fight cancer from this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Dick. Any other council members have announcements?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman.
I just wanted to thank the people who are doing the plowing because it's really nice to have the blade picked up behind my driveway. And today they even picked it up in the front where you shovel to get the walk, the postman in. So I appreciate that. I know it's a lot of work. It is pretty crazy out there. Thank you. And if I could get the parks to only plow half of the bike paths so that skiers.
That's a great question. And I did look into that and I have a response for you. So. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, one more comment. I'd also like to say thank the fire department. I know everybody was out. Lots of frozen pipes, broken pipes, water spraying everywhere. We went through that heat wave on Saturday. I think we got up to what, two degrees? And then the snow started to melt and come through our roof as well, too. So thank you to the guys and gals of the fire department. We saw you guys all over this weekend.
Excellent. I think they'll both give us an update on their, they handled and what, what they did during the freeze up there. So I've no further council announcements. I'll move on to this, this new section, which I'm going to call Department Head Reports. But considering that there's seventeen direct reports to me right now, we don't have a full fleet of department heads. We're going to just bring these folks up to introduce them to the new council members, the public. And one of my other goals in this is I think it will help the public and our news reporters understand what's currently in the works, what's on the agenda, and if there was an interesting incident, they'll probably hear some more information on it. So to the person who's been up all night, our street, I'm going to, I'm just going to call you our street department head right now. Chet, can you come up and just introduce yourself and give a quick rundown on how things went and the new snowplow and everything else or a snow blower?
Good evening to you all. As Jeremy said, I am the street supervisor. My name is Chet Jackman. So all darts get thrown my way. In fact, my team is still out there plowing as we speak, and we're going to have a crew out tonight. And they'll be taking care of the downtown. We are currently out of a blower. Our blower had a catastrophic failure. I do have pictures if you'd like on the damage, but we do, we did get a rental and tonight's going to be the first night that we use that rental. So all fingers crossed, everything works good and it won't be, you know, too long of a night.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chat. Appreciate the update. And I don't enter, open up to any council members who have a question for Chat.
Chat, Mr. Mayor, how's the odd side parking working out for your crews this year? The no, no parking on the outside?
Actually, as, as Jeremy said, it works very well. We are finding that with the amount of cars that are parked on the even side, that side of the street seems to get more snow because we're further out to go around the cars. So we're getting more snow on that side. So that, you know, is a challenge in itself. Once the cars move to get all that snow pushed up to the side. And tonight it's very difficult because the snow is not packing. It's very dry, as you guys know, because of the temperatures. And it just, it's rushing out in front of the, the graders and around the blades. So I think we're going to have a few complaints about that, but we'll be able to address those tomorrow.
Any other consequence questions for Chat? Chat, thanks so much. Be safe out there. Appreciate what you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Is Rod in the room by chance? Can you make it? No, he's out working. How about, let's go next to Cheryl. Cheryl in the room? So Cheryl is our, I'm going to botch this, Grant Administrator. I'll just let Cheryl introduce herself.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Cheryl Hughes, the Grants Contracts and Procurement Manager. Many of you already know me. I handle all of the grant management and compliance with the city. I assist in grant applications and submittals, but mostly project managers do the writing. I handle all of the contract management and pretty much every contract we have runs through me, especially I do the contract management for facility-related contracts and ensure performance. And I basically provide support for the entire, all the divisions. Any questions?
Thanks, Cheryl. Cheryl is very understated. When she says she manages projects, so the leak that was in here, she's the one going to that contract and bird dogging and hounding and saying, fix that thing. And it was in the contract, you do it. So between legal and Public Works, Cheryl has an immense knowledge and finance, of course, in the city. Any questions for Cheryl?
Thank you.
Thanks, Cheryl. Brandon, are you back there? I don't, am I just, oh, there you are.
Hello, Brandon Stagland. I'm the civil engineer for the city. So I handle most of the private development review for engineering stuff. That's like stormwater plans, water and sewer, main extensions, work in the public right away, that kind of stuff. The way that we're organized right now is capital projects is technically direct report to me, but Holly and Eric, who are construction managers, who you hear from a lot, they kind of handle the day-to-day on that stuff pretty well. So I'm kind of just there in an advisory role. Most of the stuff that I'm doing is on the private development side. A couple of long-term things that I'm kind of working on right now is developing the engineering standards for the city. You don't really have standard drawings for stuff like curb and, you know, water service connections, sewer service connections. So I'd kind of like to get that going and I'll hopefully make a presentation on that, summarizing it at some point. We also, I, I also have a couple of minor stormwater and sidewalk type code updates that I'd like to present at some point. Just haven't gotten to it yet. And then I want to mention that we have an urban area transportation plan that was last done in two thousand eight. And that's sort of a coordination document, master plan thing between us and the city of Dover and Cootney and Ponderay and Bonner County and the Independent Highway District to make sure that the projects that we're all doing, the road projects and pedestrian projects are all, that we're kind of thinking about how they all coordinate together. So that should be coming up pretty soon. It's been delayed a couple of times, but you should be hearing an update shortly on that as well.
Brandon, you're from Sandpoint, is that right?
That's right, yeah.
All right, that's awesome. I just want to point out one quick thing about Brandon as an example of, just think, a great, great foresight. So if you were in the private development side and you're applying for an application, the previous standard was that you had to show how many trips your project was going to create. And the code or the policy was you have to have an engineer do that. It's a super simple calculation. I can even do it. Anyone up here could do it. You look in a book and tells you how many trips. And Brandon thought, well, it takes me less than a minute to do that. Instead of requiring a private developer to hire an engineer to do that, which even though it's quick, it's not cheap. He said, I'm just going to do it. Takes me a minute. And if it's below the threshold, then that's a cost that the private developer doesn't have to be borne by private developer, which is ultimately probably passed on in the housing. So right idea like that to make City Hall function a little more efficiently and, and less onerous on, on the process. So I'd open it up to any questions for Brandon if there are any.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brandon. How about our IT team? Are you guys here? Lance and Adam? This is a team that's worth their weight in gold and you don't know, you need them until they're not there. And if they're doing their job, you never think you know them. So.
Never know who we are.
Counselors, thanks for having us here tonight. Just a quick introduction. Lance kind of operating as the administrative lead for the IT department, primarily focused on vendor management, project management, software solutions, and then handling the software side of the IT budget. And
I'm Adam. I'm the primary technical lead in the IT department. My responsibilities are project management, physical and cybersecurity, network infrastructure and systems administration.
So Adam and I took over for the previous MSP, which is the managed services provider that handled all the IT services for the city of Sandpoint last year in January. Just want to kind of keynote on a couple of things that we were able to accomplish so far in the first year. Successfully off-boarded that managed services provider and then provided internal IT services, kind of brought IT back in-house for the city. Consolidated and drastically lowered the overall IT costs for the city year over year by bringing in and kind of replacing some of the software solutions that were managed by that MSP. And then also just resolved and assisted in over two thousand IT services or issues and projects that had significant impacts on the staff productivity. I think if you ask any of the staff, they're probably going to say, you know, they're pretty appreciative of a lot of the work that we've done.
We are taking an increased security stance across the board. We've increased security with MFA implementation for critical services, as well as our Microsoft Security Score has increased from fourteen percent at the beginning of this year to over fifty percent in the last eleven months. And we're proactively hardening across the board on the city infrastructure. With we also went with our full management solution for easy device management, alerting and configured faster detection for response to issues. Patch management with policy enforcement for city equipment. And we also implemented a full ticketing solution for faster, more reliable help desk requests.
Some of the overall stuff that we've been, you know, trying to accomplish here at the city and just make sure that the staff is taken care of and well-supported so they can accomplish all the things that they do. A couple of things that we have in the books in the works for two thousand twenty-four, we have a, you know, pretty big SCADA project coming that's going to help us upgrade the water treatment, wastewater treatment, lift stations, and also provide some major security hardening for our critical infrastructure here in the city of Sandpoint. A new upgrade for our enterprise resource planning solution, which is our BSN A move. It's going to help really our finance team, building department team, and then our public works team and business licensing team really kind of navigate through some of those things for the public when they're trying to apply for permits, they're trying to apply for business licenses, or just generally interacting with the staff along with helping our financial team, coordinating financial reports for the public. And then the last one in here, just major GIS improvements planned through two thousand twenty-four, starting off with utilities management platform to really kind of give our utilities crews a jumpstart for locates and some of the other stuff that they need to do that they currently don't have access to. And it's going to kind of centralize a lot of our utilities management. So that way wastewater, water treatment in the city shop can really focus together and have a full platform that they can use simultaneously.
Thanks, gentlemen. One of the things you might not be aware of on the council or in the public, but the SCADA thing, it's, I won't get into the weeds, but it's basically controls our water plant and sewer plant and lift stations from remotely. And there was an incident in Florida, I believe it was about a year and a half ago, where a terrorist actually broke into the computer system and was putting chemicals at levels that were deadly in the water. They caught it, but that's the kind of thing these guys, in addition to managing fifty different types of software, and they're rolling out a new website this year. They, they keep us safe and it's, it's a, it's a huge job and appreciate everything you guys do. But any questions from the council for these gentlemen?
Mayor, I just want to thank Lance for his patience and not treating me like a digital immigrant that I am when you were setting me up with my email. It was very kind.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Appreciate it.
How about Amy real quickly? This is a familiar face, I think, for a lot of you, but.
Good evening. Amy Tweetin, city planner. And yes, I do appear before you pretty regularly. Again, work with the Planning and Zoning Commission and on the long-term planning process, we'll be talking later tonight about next steps with comprehensive plans. So that's one thing that's underway. In terms of application or development reviews, we do have, we're reviewing a lot of short plots, which are subdivisions of four lots or fewer. Right now, we're probably reviewing simultaneously seven or eight of those. And then on the building permit front, we did receive a building permit for the first building for the tribute, which is that mixed-use development on North Boyer, north of Super One. So that permit is in and that is going to be starting its review process. And then we also have in the process, not quite complete yet, a six-townhouse lot development at the corner of Lake and Third Street. We also have a pending conditional use permit application for the hotel, the, the new hotel at the waterfront. That is a initial use permit, just given the size of the footprint, a building that is fifteen thousand square feet or bigger goes through the conditional use process. So that will be coming forward. And then the Development Impact Advisory Committee, Development Impact Fee Advisory Committee is going to be convened before the next Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to look at extending some fees. And then also I come generally, Christine and I come quarterly and give you a development and planning and zoning update. So we're, we're doing the year-end report on that. And then a couple of other reports that we're working on that we'll be coming forward with is status of accessory dwelling units kind of across time, what's being built, what are the sizes, height, square footage? Just, and are they being converted to short-term rentals or not? So kind of a status on accessory dwelling units. And then also we've been with a new compliance for short-term rentals, compliance firm for the past year. So we're just going to give an update on the status of short-term rentals. But we also know there's pending legislation that could vastly change how we do or do not regulate those. So to be continued.
Thanks, Amy. Does anyone have any questions for Amy?
Thanks.
Amy, in that, the project behind Super One, my mind correct, that's like a hundred and thirty-six units or something?
It's up to a hundred and seventy-four.
Okay, so public, that's a hundred and seventy-four new units behind Super One. So expect to see that going forward.
Mr. Mayor, you did mention mixed use. So is there going to be commercial on the ground floor?
There's non-residential on the ground floor.
Thanks, Amy.
You're welcome.
And again, I want to emphasize the, the process here. I know it's time consuming, but I think that kind of information helps inform the public. So they're not surprised when they see something coming up. Next, Holly and Eric, you guys want to go together or? You're kind of a team. But I don't want to steal your thunder either.
We work together close enough. I think we can probably present together as well.
Awesome.
I'm Eric Bush, Construction Manager.
Holly Ellis, Construction Manager.
Holly and I both work on capital projects, council direct projects beyond project management, construction management of, you know, projects that were infrastructure upgrades and the like. We also work on our capital improvement process. That's scoping, budgeting, estimating, prioritizing projects for future years. That's a process we start generally in the spring and that takes us about six months. It's quite an undertaking, but it's a really fun process because we get to develop and work with the mayor and counselors and everybody else with our great team in City Hall to figure out, you know, the next step in infrastructure upgrades and, and improvements that we're making citywide. For myself personally, the projects I'm working on right now, or at least a few of them, Great Northern is the big one. You know, are one of our larger projects in the city. We're approaching sixty percent design with that project. I'll expect that sometime this spring. There's a various things that we're kind of waiting on that may either move forward or push back that date, but we're actively pursuing that. We're working with various partners, Bonner County, IHD, BNSF, and lots of other organizations that have a kind of stake in this project, as well as some of the private businesses. We're starting to negotiate right away acquisitions or begin that process of acquiring right away for our reorganization of Great Northern. Beyond that, we have two lift stations that we're upgrading this year. We hope to go out to bid this spring. That's one's at City Beach and one is what we refer to as the Exxon lift station. That's basically right across the street from Powder Hound on Superior. Those two are way beyond their useful lifespan and Rod and his crew spent a lot of time keeping those active. So that'll be a great upgrade when we get those. It'll take a lot of of the extra effort off their plate that they can focus on those things. I also manage the, our local option tax sidewalk improvement projects. We completed two thousand twenty threes in the fall. They have a couple cleanup things to do in the spring. We kind of got tackled by the snow late, late in the project. But the, the majority of the project is complete and we'll wrap that up as soon as snow has gone in the spring. And we'll be starting design of our two thousand twenty-four projects this winter and we'll be constructing those this summer. And a project that is also upcoming in two thousand twenty-four is a wastewater mainline improvement between Ruth and Boyer. And that is in the alley between church and pine. So we won't be impacting one of our streets. It'll be the alley, which will help minimize traffic interruptions and the like. So that is, we'll be looking to hire an engineer. Um, so that is uh, we'll be looking to hire an engineer sometime in the next uh couple of months for that and um start designing that project. Um, I stand for any questions you may have.
Thanks. Let's combine that with Holly and then we'll hit all the infrastructure questions and.
Yeah, my um big update for the week is we got that transportation uh alternative program eh application in. Mayor signed that today. So just wanted to quickly recognize, we got letters of support for that sidewalk on the east side of Boyer, uh, north of Mountain View. Letters of support from the City of Ponderay, B C A, I H D, the Food Bank and the School District. So um, thanks to those folks, if you see them around, uh, we appreciate their support. Um, otherwise, I'm working on getting our bid docs ready for that Pine and Fifth Signal project. We've got design underway for the Boyer Water Main Project, which is a portion of that coal steel line main that's on Boyer. We're gonna um get a portion of that replaced this year. Uh, Bridge Street Bridge Rehab, we're working on that for rehab later this fall. Our street project this year is reconstruction of fur and that's between Forest and Division Avenue. And um, well, we're also hoping to get cedar reconstruction, at least a design off and running here soon.
Awesome. Um, and uh before I open it up, uh, for folks who aren't aware, Great Northern, uh, pretty significant project, uh, total realignment, uh. Rebuild, um, it's a major project that's gonna cost around.
Twenty million?
Twenty million dollars. So um, it's a big project, Urban Renewals is gonna participate and uh. Just keep your radar up as that project moves along, so you're informed. Any questions for council for Holly and Eric?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Um, you mentioned sidewalk projects for this year. Are we chipping away at our pedestrian priority network?
We are.
Um. Can you give us a preview of of where we might expect some new sidewalks this year?
Um, I'll have to update you next time.
Okay.
Um, there is um, our running list of our pedestrian priority network has um. Basically pieces and parts can move around depending on how much money we have available this year. Um, so for our twenty twenty four dollars, we expended some of our twenty dollars with our twenty three project. Um, so we could kind of finish both sides of Lavina and Lawrence. Um, so our budget will be a little bit smaller this year, which may um require us to choose a a less expensive block or series of blocks. Um, but I will update you. Um, I don't have those um kind of decisions in front of me and that might be something that we would like to discuss.
Right. And just to remind the public, our budget for that comes from our local option lodging tax.
Correct.
Which if we have a really strong tourist season, we'll have more money for sidewalks next year, basically.
That's right.
Um. Holly, maybe this one's for you. Last year, we received the Child Pedestrian Safety Grant for the Division Sidewalk Improvements. Are we continuing that to the north this year along Division past the the middle school?
We haven't heard back on that grant application yet. Um, so we applied for a grant to continue. Haven't heard back. We'll hear back this spring.
Okay. Are you hopeful?
Uh, it's super competitive. The first time we applied for the grant, the grant, we got at funding the second. Round.
Gotcha.
So there's. The hope is, is if we don't get it the first round, there there will be more funding and we'll get it the second.
Okay. Cool. Thank you.
Any other questions for Holly and Eric?
Mister Mayor, um, so my question, Holly, is if we do get that grant, I know I had had some questions with um. Previous staff um about shifting some of our focus further down towards Herman Stidwell. Will we really, really have a significant? Problem down there with some of the sidewalks? Um. Just kind of putting that back out there because I don't know if you had that information and if that was kind of. On your radar as figuring out where the most important pieces are.
So for that particular grant, we were targeting to get to Pine, so on the south end of Division, just from where we left off on the previous project to Pine.
Okay.
Um, beyond that, we haven't identified our next.
Okay, okay.
Improvement location, but that can be considered.
And then my second question is kind of for both of you, since you guys are the engineers and sort of project managing. Does that mean that you also support Maeve as far as um? The building construction and such that's going on, or are you involved with that piece or is that all external?
As needed.
Yeah, I I would say, I would say indirectly. Um, Maeve relies and we we rely on Maeve as well, um, as. Various backgrounds and expertise, uh, you know, for various types of construction, so. There's things I know about that 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 Maeve asked me for and and vice versa, um, that Maeve is an expert in, so. Um, indirectly, I guess, would be would be the best way to answer that.
Right, right, because I know she has her specialty, which isn't engineering, but yet you guys are the engineers and and so, okay, right.
Does have, um, I think Brandon Stagland, he's our civil engineer. He's been working. I think he attends those meetings pretty frequently.
Okay. All right, just curious about how that worked. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Have a great night. Um, Maeve, are you in the room? Think uh Maeve needs no introduction, but. Um. I think we all know she's got her hands full right now, but.
Thank you all. It's wonderful to see you and a new, a new era. Um. So for those of you that don't know, um, my name is Maeve Nevins Louter. I'm the Park Planning and Development Manager and my role here, I wear a couple hats. I'm also the. Uh, urban forester and the invasive weed coordinator. Um, under the current, what I've been doing currently with um. Uh, park planning and development, my main project is Travers. Uh, I am managing six contracts there right now. Um, when I started here in the fall of twenty twenty one, um, the parks planning budget. And capital improvement budget was just under a million dollars. Since I've been here, I've been able to um be part of the team that has brought forth. Uh, we are now at nine point uh eight two three million dollars for Travers alone. Um, and that doesn't include the um nearly half million that's been invested in the watershed as well, so. I'm very proud of that and it's become a passion child of mine to work on Travers. Um, so some quick updates where we are right now. We are twenty seven percent of the way completed with construction. We are actively forming our concrete forms for the foundation and we anticipate. Uh, pouring in the next week or so, weather has delayed us a little bit, but not as much as you'd expect. The crews have been out there and the ground's been blanketed and heated and. So we've been working along through all of this and I'm really grateful to Jeno for that. Um, I've been working with the design team as well as the contractors on the bid set number two that was flown over Christmas and. It was on the street for about three weeks. We did get the bids back and we've been um value engineering. Uh, that to make sure that it's on on target with our budget. Um, I was hoping to be here today with that bid set, but we're still validating some of the uh submittals. So I anticipate that I will be here again with that change order number three in the next couple of weeks. Um. And it's it's moving right along. Um, additionally, I did get the grant off for the T-Mobile Hometown Grant for the lighting. That's for fifty thousand dollars for. Um, the phase two of the skate park. Um, we did receive bids back on the lighting for the tennis courts. Um, it's estimated around uh between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and fifty thousand, depending on how many light poles we actually need and some of them are questionable. Um, with that number in mind, I'm looking for grants right now for funding the uh external outdoor lights that would go around the existing tennis courts. Um, to give you a quick summary of everything that's happening in Travers, because there's been a lot of information out there. I just want to get really clear, so there's. Uh, two contracts for the building. That's valued at seven point five million. We do have interest, um, that's been realized from that uh donation. And so the total budget for that is seven point um nine million currently. And um, we are currently on on target and on on budget. That project is tentatively slated to be completed by the end of twenty twenty four. Um, the skate park expansion was expanded this year to uh four hundred and two thousand dollars and fifty two thousand of that came or fif- yes, fifty two thousand came from the Bonner County Skate Park Association, so. There are still fundraising and if people care about the skate park expansion, which they should because it's all wheeled and it's for all all people. Um, it's absolutely an amazing community driven project and they are actively fundraising and you can either directly donate to them or to the city and it is a tax deduction. Um, with that, there's also the one point one two million dollar uh inclusive playground renovation that I'm working on and that includes. Um, as part of the building project, it includes the uh renovation of the existing playground, so we're working now to put them all together, so it's one unified playground expansion. We will be opening the refurbished existing playground portion of that playground first, so anticipate that opening this spring as soon as. We get better weather and we can uh finish construction out there. Um, additionally, we've allocated two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars from the Parks Capital Improvement Fund for the tennis reconstruction project. So I'm working on that right now and we'll be going into design this winter and then we'll be um doing that construction this summer. I anticipate that the uh impacts to the community will be a few weeks of closure. Uh, it could be anywhere from two weeks to six weeks from what I hear from folks on the streets, so. Uh, I'm hoping for that two week window of closure and um we should have those tennis courts refurbished by the end of the summer. Um, and then finally, there's the bike skills course that the Ponderay Peddlers have um fundraised for themselves and um Jason has told you about a few times, but. Um, several of our community members donated to that project. They raised over seventy six thousand dollars. Uh, the weather came in right at the end of their construction, so they're almost done, but they still have a few more uh finishing touches, which allows us to have a great ribbon cutting this spring when they are finished. So again, combined with all of that, we are just shy of ten million dollars in investments in that Traverse Park project. Um, and then the other big project that I'm working on is the Little Sand Creek Watershed. As you may recall, we completed the Little Sand Creek um Watershed Recreation Plan this past June. And since then, I've been working closely with the Norda Club, with the Ski Resort, both Altera and their private development company from Schweitzer, as well as the National or the Forest Service. And um, the B L M to work on a cooperative use agreement and uh I can expect to see that coming forward to you at the next council meeting. That will be a non binding agreement and um that will essentially mean that we're all agreeing to work together. And we support the Ponderay Peddlers and the Norda Club and moving forward on their trail development. So again, nothing financial as far as that's, but it's more of. We all agree to to work together and share each other's projects. Um, I have another similar pro- project to that one and that's the Little uh, the Sand Creek uh Connections Project. The City of Sandpoint is part of that, that has several partners as well from the Connect Soul Land Trust, from the Kalispel Tribe. Um, the City of Ponderay and now um Eric Brubaker, who is working with the City of Ponderay, he is now with the Trust for Public Lands, which is incredible because they offer great resources as well. So they're part of this group and um we just had a great meeting today to catch up on where everyone was and on the City of Sandpoint side of that Connections Project. We're moving forward actively on the development of a non motorized boat launch um down by the visitor center off Highway Two. So um, yeah, really exciting stuff in the works. I anticipate that boat launch uh will probably be at twenty twenty five projects, so we'll be entering in design. Uh, the concept will be done in house with our staff that you just met, all of our amazing engineers and landscape architects. And um, it's a really great new time, so I just want to say thank you. The energy there that you've brought to us has been super positive and um. It's it's very wonderful to have you all here and Pam and Kylie have gotten to know you and I really appreciate everything that everyone's bringing to the table, so.
Thanks so much, Maeve. I uh wish we could bottle some of your energy because it's incredible what you've got going on, so thank you. Uh, any questions for me?
Mister Mayor, just a quick, um, you were gonna get the survey results from the.
Oh, yes, I need to send you that.
Okay.
I will do it right now.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Anything else for Maeve? Thanks so much, Maeve.
You're welcome.
Um, I think that's ver- pretty much everyone. How about Fire Chief? Oh, oh, Police Chief, how about that? I think we all know who you are. And what generally what you do.
In general, uh, Corey Coon, Police Chief, I put in front of you just a quick packet. I did it for uh one main purpose is it's got my phone number and email for those that may or may not have it. Um, the other purpose was to really introduce not only myself, but really my staff. Um, and the other key is I wanted to point out the years of service that some of them have. Um, as you look at that, you can see that uh I have a a couple of years of service here at the City of Soundpoint twenty seven. Uh, Captain Bailey's uh pushing twenty nine years of service. Uh, he can retire any day. Um, we call it the one day rule. Uh, Lieutenant's uh been with us for twenty ten, twenty two years. Uh, you flip over that, uh, the three sergeants, um, twenty one years, twelve and. And then, of course, thirteen years. The the key about that, the reason I bring that up is because in the last, when I first started hearing Soundpoint back in ninety seven. I think our average patrol officer between our sergeants down had probably two and a half, three years of experience. Um, which is a struggle for a first model agency. I think our average now for our patrol is probably about ten to twelve years. As an overall average, um, we've done a little bit better job of retaining some of our staff. Uh, keeping some of our employees. Um, of course, that's been through increased wages that the council's given us, some of the equipment that we've got. And just the area that we get to live in, so those are, those are pluses, but those are the the guys that really need to be recognized as I sit here in a warm building. Um, they're out towing cars and stomping through the snow, so. I I appreciate them. That, a little bit of advice, if I could give some tonight, um, Mayor covered the the snow policy. Um, I'd like to just take it one step farther and more of a a family and friends and neighbors. Uh, it's really important when the weather gets cold. And the snow flies that we check on our neighbors. Um, we check on our friends and whether we love our family or not at times. Um, it's important to reach out to them too because we don't know what's happening, um, not only just in their lives. But if they fall and got hurt or something else, and so we've had a few rescues this year, this week, um, where we found people um unconscious in their homes. Because their neighbors cared enough to call. Because they hadn't seen them, so it's it is important that if you haven't seen your neighbor, you haven't checked in on them or your family or friends. Uh, do so. If you find something like that, don't hesitate to call the dispatch center. Um, an officer will go by and check on it and make sure everything's okay, especially with the cold temperatures we've had and now with the snow load that's coming, roofs and et cetera. Are gonna be a challenge, so.
Chief, is that called a safety check? Is that what it?
We just do a welfare check.
Welfare.
Yeah, yeah, don't don't hesitate to call. Also in that packet, I put my phone number and my email. The other, the other thing for the two new council members. Um, if you got questions or concerns, uh, that's my cell phone number, uh, you can have it. The entire public, I think, has it. I've posted enough times. In my email, uh, don't be afraid to shoot me a text message or or email me if it's something, if it's something urgent. Uh, call the dispatch center, please. They'll get somebody there right away, but if it's something that can wait or if you have a question, don't, don't hesitate to reach out.
Thanks, Chief. Can you give us just a brief update on the response to the Warming Center that we, the lobby that we opened? Did we have anyone take advantage of that?
Yeah, we ended up having one individual. Uh, I know there's a lot of concern about the the lack of some of the facilities opening up. Um, just a quick, a quick overview. Historically, a lot of the churches and organizations will open the doors in those time. We usually don't get a lot of people that will come out and participate, so it's a lot of effort that goes in from some of the community members to open those warming. Uh, whether it's the churches or homes or or facilities. Um, this this time, I think, is the first time since I've been here, we actually had somebody come in. And we ended up, somebody wasn't, ended up at the hospital with some frostbite. They wanted a place to stay and warm up overnight, so they actually picked them up and brought them down here. And so they did, they did use our facilities for the one night, so which, which was good, so. We did have the that opportunity to to serve.
Thanks, Chief. Any questions for the chief? Appreciate all you do, Cory. Thank you. Um, is there anyone, uh, I I know you know what Sarah does, our finance director, you know what Melissa does. Uh, anyone I missed that I said, oh, thank you. Come on up.
Good evening, Mister Mayor and Council. My name is Rich Gude. I'm your water treatment supervisor. Uh, I don't know if you guys know, but we have two treatment plants. Um, which is kind of unique for a city our size, actually any city really. Yeah, we're kind of blessed because it gives us redundancy. Um, so if one plant's not running, hopefully the other one is. Uh, with the redundancy, um, the lake plant was built in two thousand twelve. And there was no provisions made for standby generators, believe it or not. Um. Well, recently, we've just got, uh, we finally ordered two standby generators, one for the raw building and one for the treatment plant. They work in conjunction with each other. Um, we probably won't have the big, the large generator until next year sometime is what I'm.
But we've got three days of storage, right?
Yeah.
Technically.
Well, it depends on the time of the year, depends on the usage. Um. So, but yes, we do have some storage and we have the other treatment plant, but hopefully we don't get to that point.
Yeah.
But um. In the next year or so, I'll probably be in front of you asking you for your support to get those generators landed and get the provisioned provisions made to wire those. Generators into the treatment plant. So.
Well. Thanks so much. Uh, you know, it's one of those things, no, no news is good news, so. Um, uh, really appreciate you taking the time to be here, introducing yourself and thanks for keeping us alive every day with great water.
Absolutely.
Any questions? Rich?
Right. Thank you.
Thanks, Rich. Have a good night. I think that's everyone. Did I miss anyone? All right, good. Appreciate uh the time, council and public for letting uh me introduce that format. I I hope you'll uh enjoy it. In the future, it'll probably be much uh shorter. And um, uh, more specific to projects you have interest in. Uh, moving on from that, um, we are now uh entering the public forum portion of the meeting. Uh, which allows the public to address the council and myself regarding items. Items listed on the consent calendar or on any topic not included in the agenda. So if it's listed in the agenda, you're gonna have a chance to speak on it. If anyone in chambers wishes to speak now during the public forum or during any other portion of the meeting, you must complete a signup form and hand it to staff. If you're on Zoom and wish to speak during the general public forum, please raise your hand on Zoom at this time to accommodate those who wish to speak on general items during the public forum, as well as those who wish to speak on specific business items or agendas, items, a total of twenty minutes will be dedicated to the public forum at the beginning of this meeting. If you'd like to speak and did not have an opportunity to do so, we will provide that opportunity by reopening the public forum at the end of our regular agenda. I will now, um, recite the rules and procedures. This is gonna be a little bit of a reset. You know, for those unfamiliar, we do have a public decorum policy and we have a policy for how you handle yourself when you're speaking. Um, I'm not gonna read that. I find it, um, a little intense, so we'll post it if you're, um, curious in the future, but, uh, the general takeaway is be pleasant and don't make derogatory statements. Don't talk about staff. Um, we can't take testimony, uh, on any planning issue because there's this thing called due process and we have special hearings for those. You know, you can't be boisterous, you can't, um, hold up signs, um, just act like good people. Um, and if we can't do that, then we'll, we'll have to reinstate the old policies and state them. We can't really answer questions because that will devolve into, uh, a question and answer period. And this is a business meeting, um, to conduct the public business. If you do have questions and you can't get them answered, um, call me anytime. Uh, usually that day I will get back to you and get you any information, uh, I can. So unless otherwise provided, each speaker will be allowed three minutes. Um, when it's your turn to speak, please introduce yourself, uh, state whether you reside within the city of Sandpoint. And, um, yeah, let's, uh, have some good respectful discussion and comments. So with that, um, Madam Quirk, has anyone signed up during speak during the public forum?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Scott Ackland.
Mr. Ackland.
Good evening. I am, uh, Scott Ackland. I live in Bonner County. And, uh, normally Janine does this, but she asked me to step in and I'm going to say a prayer that you wrote down that. Well, I guess I'm not, so I'm just gonna pray for you guys because it's one of my passions for the community to come together in unity and that's where I stand, so. Father, we just thank you so much for these people who've taken on the shoulder of government father. And we just pray blessings in their household and God, we pray for wisdom in these walls that continue thriving and for peace to be found in this. God, we just ask that all find ways to peace and all find ways to work together for the good of the community. Lord, we thank you that you are amidst with us, even if we see you or not. And we just play blessings, blessings for this, for this city in your name. Amen. And thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Ackland.
Mr. Mayor, no one else has signed up to speak during public forum.
Thank you. Um, moving on, um, we will move on to the consent calendar. Uh, we will now proceed for the record. The total amount of bills is three hundred and twenty one thousand, five hundred and forty seven dollars and fifteen cents for regular payables. Does council have any questions? Are there any items council wishes to remove from the consent calendar? Hearing none. Um, no vote required for a counselor to move in. Uh, so that is just, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Removed second.
The motion by Councilman Dick, second by Councilman Welker. Any discussion? All those in favor, it's a roll call vote.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you. Next item, number seven, under old business, uh, intermapped and infrastructure fiber optic cable system franchise agreement. This item was, uh, moving on to old, I'm sorry. During the council's December sixth, two thousand twenty three meeting, staff provided a presentation on the proposed intermapped and infrastructure group fiber optic, fiber optic cable system franchise agreement, followed by a discussion, the first reading of the ordinance by title only and approval of the summary, which was published in the Bonner County Daily Bee, the city's newspaper of record on December thirteenth, two thousand twenty three, pursuant to Idaho Code, section fifty three twenty nine. Now that thirty days has passed since the introduction of the ordinance and publication has taken place, council may consider approval of the ordinance granting the following as reflected in the title of the ordinance, which I'll now recite. An ordinance of the city of Sandpoint, the municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, granting a non exclusive fiber optic cable system franchise to Intermountain Infrastructure Group LLC, providing the terms and conditions of the franchise, providing for a franchise fee and providing for a publication and effective date. Does council have any questions or wish to discuss further? Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
With no changes to the ordinance as initially read and published, I would entertain a motion that the rules requiring three separate readings once in the ordinance's entirety be suspended and that ordinance eleven, uh, fourteen eleven passed its second and third readings under suspension of the rules.
No moved. Second.
Moved by Councilman Schreiber, second by Councilman Dick, um, this will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Quirk. Uh, next item, seven B, um, schedule comprehensive plan council, planning zoning working sessions. Uh, I'd like to initiate some discussion on the scheduling of these workshops or working sessions. Um, I want to, I want to call them working sessions because they're not really workshops for the public to participate in other than comment. Um, and I guess, um, what I perceive and would like to see accomplished here is I'd like to see us work through the public comment, uh, that was received, um, uh, towards the end of the year there on the comp plan. Um, and, uh, if any changes or redactions or additions are needed to the, the draft, um, work through that uh, and then bring it to the council unless there's material changes, um, uh, for consideration and adoption. Um, back in two thousand nine, the last time we did this, that this process took twenty two meetings. We went through a plan word by word, chapter by chapter. And, uh, I'm not sure it's gonna take that long because I, I think it's been fairly, uh, well reviewed by the council, but, um, I guess I would open this up to discussion at this point. Um, any preferences, concerns or, um, time constraints, um, or thoughts on, on scheduling these workshops?
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Councilwoman Duquette?
Um, I would like to suggest that we offer different times, different days and different places than usual. Just to try to get more input. I was thinking maybe, I'm not sure about the community hall and the library, maybe some weekend days.
Yeah, I think, uh, you know, in, uh, two thousand nine, we did do some on the weekends. The location's a little difficult because of accommodation of people with needs to hear, um, and for us to record, um, the meetings have required. So, uh, I'm, I'm wide open to days and hours. So, uh, I guess, uh, I can do this a couple of different ways. I can internally work and have staff work with all of you to, uh, define some, uh, blocks that work well for you. Um, or I don't think we want to do it right here, right now, but that would be my preference.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a clarifying question?
Absolutely.
Um, your description on the agenda describes a, uh, work session with city council and planning and zoning. We, we did have one, what, about a year ago, February, probably. Right here, it was open to the public. Um, it was outstanding. It was a great opportunity to look eye to eye with the, the P and Z commissioners who had worked on this for four years. We then went back to public engagement, which we did throughout November, um, very successfully. I thought we had two town hall style exhibits here, very well attended. I attended both, spoke to a couple dozen people during those. We had the, uh, six weeks, I believe, we accept comments online. I believe what we're talking about now is a, a, a review of the feedback gathered in the most recent round of public engagement, not additional public engagement. Now, that doesn't mean this is a closed meeting. The, the public would still be welcome to come and provide comments. But if I'm not mistaken, I, I, I envision this as more like a repeat of what we did last February with the P and Z Commission, city council sitting around a table with the public invited to come provide comment to those who have the power to actually implement these changes right away. And in that, uh, in that, uh, work session, we would also be hearing from Amy, who I believe would probably be the one, uh, uh, collecting all of the online feedback that we got and the written feedback in the in person town halls. Is that correct? Is that kind of what we're talking about? Or are we looking to do more of the poster boards, invite the public back, come look at the different chapters and tell us what you think? Because I feel like we've done that.
No, it's the former, um, and I'll be facilitating these meetings. Um, and in two thousand nine, the planning commission was not involved at this point. Once the draft came to the council, the council did it themselves. Um, yourself and others have expressed interest in broadening that, which I think's fine. At the culmination of this, this process, it, it is sitting around a table, going through, reading, um, uh, so the only those who are interested have to, um, go through it from the public, um, making, uh, straw informal votes. The goal is to reach consensus throughout this document, so it can be adopted unanimously and we have full support, um, of the public and, and most importantly, this body. But yes, I imagine working to, um, maybe starting the meet, the meeting or that chapter section or those chapters, brief public comment, us working through those written comments collected and then, uh, concluding that chapter, hopefully, um, with consensus and unification, maybe taking a couple more minutes of public comment and then that chapter basically can be, uh, tweaked, amended as, um, Amy hears and prepared for adoption. And then we, we do that until we get through the document and then we have a public hearing on it. And then we hopefully adopt it. Um, the only caveat is if there's a material change, if, um, there were some radical change to the land use map, for example, at this point, um, that might kick it into back to planning commission. But my hope is that it would go straight from these working sessions right to a public hearing for adoption.
Uh, I would point out that we have three weeks between now and the next meeting. So perhaps if two weeks is, is considered by council enough time to get the public aware that we're going to be hosting this, maybe we do it two weeks from tonight? If we're talking about dates right now?
Yeah, I, I would, uh, I'll get staff on it tomorrow and we'll find blocks of times and, uh, they'll be concurrent. I imagine it's gonna be at least two and if not three or four. But yeah, we'll, we'll knock it out. We'll get together. We'll make sure the newspapers know, put on Facebook, put on our website. Um, we can push it everywhere we push things, so hopefully the, the word will spread and we can get this adopted. Uh, and then of course there'll be a, like the, uh, notice for that public hearing. So, any other council?
Yes, um, I watched the planning and zoning, um, meeting a while ago where, um, Amy had shared all the comments that people had written on the survey. Um, I'm hoping that's what's gonna be shared so that the people can see that their comments are taken.
Yes, I think, uh, it will include the draft and it will include, uh, that index of comments and it'll be up to you to.
There were, there were quite a few remarks written on the comments by whoever had gone through them at first, whether they were just noted or just so people see.
Yeah.
The process.
Uh, my goal is to be as transparent as possible in this process and bring us together, so. Any other comments? Deb's gone through this, I think, twice, so.
Mr. Mayor, may I? I think we've been working on this for four years, so I'm struggling with drawing out the process even more. I think we need to expedite more rapidly. I'd be open to one final meeting, um, but I feel like we need to prioritize some other things, um, so they don't get lost. Um, and, uh, my greatest concern is our sewage treatment plant. And I know you've said your number one priority is comp plan, but I think, um, as we know, and as you've said yourself, we have an amazing staff, um, Amy especially, she's been working on this. We've had, um, a very capable planning commission work on this. We had two recent, um, open townhouse style meetings, which I attended both, talked to many members of the public. I feel like the, the intent of the comp plan is, is there. Um, tiny little tweaks, yes. Um, does it take, um, a significant amount of meetings to draw this process out to get that accomplished? I don't believe that it does. Uh, I think it's time that we move on with this process. Um, and I think the reason I would say that is because, um, we need to prioritize code, um, and the code is the document that really has the teeth in it that is gonna keep Sandpoint Sandpoint. And I believe that that is what the public is actually asking us to do. They're not asking us to dwell on the comp plan. Um, and, um, most notably, the urban core. Um, the public seems very engaged with that. Um, Cedar Street first, um, the area of the beach, the granary district. Um, and I think the code will better protect the public and inform the developers, um, to linger on the comp plan, which has no teeth, does a disservice to the public. And I think that, um, if your desire is to meet again with the planning commission, I'd be open and willing to do that one more time, but it needs to happen, um, quickly. And I think what we need to do is stay on our timeline so that we can get those code adjustments, uh, excuse me, code adjustments made. Um, I know that Amy, um, had a plan in place that was bought, brought before us recently and the, that was put out to the public and I believe that deadline was April, eight, uh, April. Sorry, I skied today. I'm getting tired, um, plus working all day. Um, and, um, I would like to see us really focus on that and, and in addition to that, not lose track of sewage treatment. And I think that really needs to be our number one priority.
Well, I appreciate those comments, Councilman Rule, and, um, I guess, uh, my response is, uh, if you can get it done one meeting, hallelujah, that's great. I just speak from historical, uh, preference where the council wasn't unified. There were elements that some council members agreed and disagreed with. And we really, in my opinion, want to have a unified council when we adopt this plan. So, uh, I hope we can do it in one meeting. Maybe we can, uh, let's set that aspiration. I think it'll take a while to, uh, go through the chapters and understand the gravity of every word. Um, I, uh, completely agree with you. As soon as we get this comp plan done, we jump right into the priorities as set by the comp plan, uh, including, uh, rezoning and changing all that zoning code. And, um, I think that plan is what's going to justify and direct that work. So, um, yes, we will move forward. Um, like I said, tomorrow morning, we'll start getting blocks of time for the first meeting. And, uh, if it's requires a second or a third, and hopefully not twenty two like the last one did. Uh, I think you're a more unified group, so, um, hopefully we can proceed. And in regards to the sewer plant, um, we are fully walking and chewing gum at the same time. You saw the staff that I have to work with, uh, they're amazing and, uh, that project is moving forward and design and, um, all those elements are moving. That's absolutely a critical, critical project too. So thanks for your comments. Um, any other council have comments on this?
Mr. Mayor? Um, I'd like to see that, um, Amy is not too bogged down in the comp plan so that she can also concurrently have the ability to start working on these code changes because they're gonna take quite some time. And if we fall behind on that and more permits come in, we'll have no recourse and we'll be left with, um, what they decide to build within the current code that is legal. And so I have great concerns as I think the public does.
Uh, I, I hear your concerns, Councilwoman Rule.
Thank you.
Um, we need the comp plan adopted, so we know what those code priorities are. Uh, the comp plan may say that residential is the highest priority. If it is, we'll do residential first. If it says downtown's the highest priority, we'll absolutely get going on downtown. And, um, Amy knows that that's her next, uh, great task and, uh, excited to start working on it, so. Any other comment, uh, regarding setting, um, workshop sessions or working sessions? Excellent. There's no action on that. So is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Moving on to item seven C, James E. Russell Sports Center Endowment Fund. Uh, this is the final item under old business, uh, to create proposal to create the James E. Russell Sports Center Endowment Fund, which would be established with interest earnings from the donation the city received from James A. and Virginia Ginny Russell. It will be used for the purposes of supporting future maintenance and operations and capital improvements for the sports facility adjacent to Gateway Plaza. This item was originally included on the January third, two thousand twenty four meeting agenda and was tabled by the council to this meeting. I guess. I guess my comments on this before I entertain a motion are that. We don't know what the project's total cost will be.
Mr. Mayor, point of order. Could we remove the item from the table? There is a motion for that.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Madam clerk. I will entertain a motion to remove this item from the table.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Welker, second by Councilman Dick. The roll call vote.
Counselor Welker.
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber.
Yes.
Counselor Ducat.
Yes.
Counselor Dick.
Yes.
Counselor Rule.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, that motion passes.
Excellent. Thank you. So my comments on this before you enter into the discussion deliberation. I, I think at this point, we really don't know what the cost to complete this project will be. There are change orders inevitably, and anyone who's been involved in construction know that there are unknowns as you proceed. So I think it would be wise to await the project's completion and then assess this opportunity. I would also point out that the city does have the capability to create their own restricted fund. That could serve the same purpose without the administration fee. I am very grateful to the Anovia Foundation for this kind of offer and for all it does in this community. With that, I would, are there any members of the public who'd like to comment on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Council, would you like to take any action? Failure to take action would result in this item dying for lack of action.
Sure. Yeah, I, I'd like to give some comment, actually, Mr. Mayor.
I guess I'd. Would you like to make a motion to either approve or deny?
I move, I move that we approve the establishment of a James E. Russell Endowment Fund. With the minimum initial investment of twenty-five thousand dollars so that we know that we have some funds set aside. To support the ongoing maintenance of this facility.
Sir, seconds.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Welker, second by Councilman Dick to proceed with the creation of the endowment fund. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, could Sarah talk about how she would? Deposit this money for?
Sure, I think we could probably get some perspective from Sarah, our finance director.
In lieu of perhaps, I, I did.
And, and Sarah, maybe you can just speak specifically if we have this similar capability to create a restricted fund. The management fees on that and your thoughts on the, whether this is premature to create a fund. To support maintenance and operation prior to the project being completed.
Yes, good evening. Yes, we do actually do this quite a bit with other restricted funds. We have it in our water fund or actually in all the funds, we have restricted funds. So this can be done internally. In fact, that's what we normally do. So in this case here, they, we don't know project costs, so typically we would not set up something like this till the very end of a project. So and, and we don't have many fees with inside, so we don't charge ourselves any money. That would be something we'd be saving and then also would be making money on this. So that answers. Any more questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman Rule.
So relative to the public, if public did want to make further donations. What would be the pros and the cons? You know, sometimes my impression is people don't want to donate to a governmental agency. Whereas they may donate to another. What they perceive as a dot or good cause. Can you speak to that, please?
And that is correct. Actually, endowment funds are very much set up for that purpose, especially that. The internally, if someone does donate for a project, that already is automatically restricted by, by just accounting regulations. So I would already put that into a restricted thing. So we would still do that. It would still be tracked that way. But the endowment, that is an enticing, what you mentioned there, that is enticing for external. But I would, I would also caution you though, that this is a project that we don't know all the costs of this. That is my concern, is that we don't know this. So now we're going to tie up twenty-five thousand dollars. What happens if the project goes over budget? We're going to have to find that somewhere else. So. I would, I would suggest waiting till the very end of this. This is not a bad idea. I just think that it needs to be considered at the end of a project, not in the middle of a project. We haven't even, I think we're have the second one come to council next time, next week for the change order number two. And that's not even half of, I don't think we've even done half of the funds yet, have not even been in, in cumberg yet, so.
Okay. Yeah, we're only twenty-seven percent through the project.
Yeah.
Right. And so as far as. I mean, I don't know, for lack of a better word, promotionally, would the city reach out and, and let the public know they could? If we chose to do an endowment either now or, because I don't know what the other counselors think. Or at the end of this project, would there be any kind of outreach? Or I know this was originally potentially an Anovia thing. Would there be outreach? Do you have any, could you speak to that at all or?
There definitely would be, could be outreach from the city for that. That wouldn't be a finance. That would be more probably the people who are. Wanting the project and wanting that money in those funds. Another option to do is not do twenty-five thousand. You could do a lower amount. That's an option as well. I think that would be an amendment to what they already have given us.
And maybe for Fonda or you, Sarah, was there any specific directive with the original gift? Related to restricting funds or placing funds to create an endowment?
In, as far as I know, in the contract, there was no specific.
I understood this to be funds that were, sorry, Mr. Mayor. Interest funds now on the amount that would be put towards this.
Correct. So all of that now is tracked in the same fund as the, the actual contribution was. So at any time, I could tell you exactly how much each of those, what, what the initial left or what the interest earnings are on that amount.
Councilwoman Rule, I can tell you, because I've been privy to some of the fine-grained details of the budget so far. I would expect us to be very challenged to build what was presented with the funds available.
Sarah, can you give us an idea of our current interest earnings on the original seven point five million dollar donation?
It's over, over three hundred thousand at this point.
And how much is it generating typically per month right now?
It's about five percent.
Five percent of the seven point five million.
We spent some of that, so less than that, but yes.
Yeah. So really, a twenty-five thousand dollar investment now is a drop in the bucket compared to what we've already earned in interest. I, 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 back to Councilwoman Rule's question about, you know, promotion. That's, in my view, going with a group like Anovia, which is, you know, impeccable reputation in the entire inland Northwest. They have a huge network of, of donors. They do events. They actively promote funds that they manage for nonprofits, for cities, for big foundations. I just don't know if that's something that, you know, a, a member of our Parks Department is going to want to take on in, in a future role to promote the. If this is going to be a meaningful funding mechanism for M and O, for this facility. Is that really something we're going to write into the job description of, of somebody in the Parks Department in the future is actively promoting? An endowment fund that's going to help support this, because I know that Anovia does that actively. So attracting those legacy gifts from community members like the Russells and perhaps future community members. In my view, this minimum twenty-five thousand dollar investment is, is a commitment that we made as a council to the Russells. To support this facility with the proceeds from their, from their original gift. And with the already, you know, accumulated earnings from that gift. The, the, this is just a way to protect a small, a small bit of that for that future endowment. So I'm, I'm going to repeat my motion to.
You don't, you don't need to repeat it. It's there. Any other council discussion?
Mr. Mayor, from what I understood, I did some research that the endowment, I, I, Anovia is great. They give great grants to the community. They do a four percent interest. If twenty-five thousand was put in there, I am told that that's locked in and gone. That's not used. All we get to use is the interest on that or if somebody donates to that. So that twenty-five thousand, what I was understanding is not ours again. It's what's donated on that. And I don't know if the Anovia people are here. To speak to that. Are you? Okay. Can she, is, are you Dig?
Sure.
I don't want to belabor this. We were going to table this is what I thought.
That's, we did. We could just work through council and then let me get any other questions and we'll have Dig answer any specific questions that council's raised. Any other council questions, comments? It's time.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question, you know, reading through this contract and I'm a little bit. Confused. There is one part of the contract that. Says that if we needed the capital or needed the principal for capital improvements. That it would take a resolution of the council and Anovia's board. And I would, I was just curious from a legal standpoint, what would happen if those two bodies disagree?
Then you can't access the principal.
Okay, so they would essentially have veto power over this money, regardless of what the council resolved.
You'd send them a resolution for the request and the reasons for the request and they would take that request to their board to invade the principal. But they could probably speak to that better than I can, but from a legal perspective, that is traditionally what the contractual arrangement is. With the agency that's granting the funds to the endowment.
Okay, thanks for clearing that up.
Dig, would you mind coming up and the, the question specifically Pam was?
Well, am I correct in my understanding that whatever is put in there is locked in? And that is not ours to access.
Correct, but there is a clause to, to Councilman Schreiber's point. That if there was a great, as we talked about, you know, a catastrophic event that needed extraordinary circumstances.
Just your name for the record.
Oh, sorry, Dig Prismer, the Borough Engagement Manager, North Region for the Anovia Foundation, Sandpoint resident. So to that point, yes, the, you would approach Anovia and say, we've had a catastrophic event. We need to touch the principal in order to help. Solve the situation. Our board is a partner with community. It's not that we're looking to gain anything from this relationship. A community foundation is, is made to, to help connect those dots between donors. And using our resources together to create more resources. So by investing through the community foundation, yes, technically gets a donation through the community foundation. But if there was dire circumstance and needed to access that capital, we've never had a situation at the foundation where that has been denied. So it, it's there as a protection for us as a foundation. We're a five oh one C three as well. So it's, it's there for a protection point. I do want to agree, you can invest through the city or you can invest through the foundation. The, the four percent rate that we've talked about is, is an average and it's conservative. We typically see anywhere from five to seven to nine, depending on the markets. We do like to be a little bit conservative that way in approach. The other thing too, there is an admin fee of one percent based on what the principal is. That's used for us to help handle the, the backend of donation work. If you do have a legacy gift that arises. We're here to help support that and take that lift off of the city. Again, donations can and hopefully will come in fast and furious in the future when the Russell Center is in place. And you have people who are willing and wanting to support this now that it's here. We'll be able to help facilitate those donations through us. If you decide to go that route, that's fantastic. If you decided to not do that route and stay through the city, do it. An endowment is a great way to protect the center in the future. A twenty-five thousand dollar investment now, I know that the concern about cost is legit. But by taking, taking that money now and making sure that you're planning for the long term. Is only going to help this council and the council in ten and fifteen years, who are trying to figure out how they have to replace the light bulbs. So it's simple things like that by taking small steps now. I just highly recommend you consider doing an endowment. We would be honored to facilitate that for you. And that's why the proposal was put before this council. So any other questions?
Council?
Can you speak a little bit to what I understood, what I understand Anovia's role to be in terms of promotion of an endowment fund? You, you, you have a regional kind of network of, of legacy donors.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I sure can. So the, Anovia has actually been around for fifty years. We are the Inland Northwest Community Foundation. It's, it's been our pleasure and honor to meet with people who live in our spaces and places. And help them figure out where they can be charitable and where the needs are. Our, our job is to be in community and understand the greatest needs. So when we have a donor who's interested in health and wellness or community building, or they're a huge tennis fan and they don't quite know where to go. We can help explain to them the options, which would include the Russell Center. So we, we serve kind of as that, I like to joke that if you remember Tinker Toys, the, the middle toy that would connect all the wooden spokes. That's what Anovia does. We connect our donors with the causes and make sure they're aware of each other so that the resources stay local. And that's where we can definitely lend a hand, so.
Council, any other questions?
Thanks, you guys.
Before I call for the vote, I just would express my concern that we don't know what the final cost of this project will be for our taxpayers. And that I believe it's premature to proceed with the creation of an endowment fund until the project is complete. But I will turn it over to you. So there's a motion and a second to proceed. Any members, did we already do the public? We did. This will be a roll call vote then.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Rule.
I'm curious if anyone would be, any of the other counselors would be interested in amending the motion. So that an endowment fund would start at project completion.
I love it.
And then to be determined through further research, whether or not we use Anovia to do that. Or we do that independently through the city.
I think that's a great suggestion, Councilwoman Rule, and I would fully support that upon project completion. I think it's a, there's a lot of benefits as we just heard. Any council members friendly to amending the motion to something that might say upon project completion?
I would second that motion to amend.
We need a first motion.
That's what I said, isn't it? Yeah, make an amendment to the motion to. To begin the endowment upon project completion.
That was moved by Councilwoman Rule, second by Councilwoman Schreiber. All those in favor of amending the motion?
Your mayor, I guess I have another question. I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Did you say then to decide? Whether to use the city or to use Anovia?
The motion was that we would, we would start an endowment upon project completion and.
That could be an endowment.
And I don't see anywhere here. Where it actually mentions Anovia.
Okay.
So I don't think that I actually have to say that.
Thank you. That's what I thought I understood. Just wanted to make sure.
So there's a motion and a second to amend the original motion. Is that a roll call vote? Excuse me?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Point of order, and I would ask. For a feedback from our legal counsel. Should we take in a vote on the original motion and then put forth a second motion? If that doesn't pass? Or is this amendment appropriate?
You have a motion to amend the motion that's been made and seconded. They have to proceed with the motion to amend first.
The motion, I believe, from what I understand from Councilman Welker, was to approve the proposed resolution. Which is in the agreement with the Anovia Foundation.
That's correct.
So the amendment is to, I guess it's something entirely different. So if there's friendliness to making a new motion, once you act on this motion. We can go back and forth, but maybe it's more appropriate to have this motion, if it dies, then you make your.
I can withdraw my amendment. If that makes it simpler.
I think so. And then we'll see where this.
Schreiber would need to withdraw his.
Would you?
I'll withdraw my second.
Friendly to that, Councilman Schreiber. The amendment to the motion's been withdrawn, so we'll now act on the original motion. Roll call vote.
Counselor Rule?
Now I'm confused as to what I'm voting on, because when we go back and forth like that. So and, and I'm also confused because. It doesn't mention Anovia in the.
In the resume, it's been presented to you.
It's attached.
It's attached.
To the agenda. I had to pull it up, the actual agenda item.
Okay, all right.
So um, Councilwoman Rule, um, if this were to fail, you could then proceed with a broader motion uh to direct action uh for the creation of an endowment upon project completion. I think that's where you're at.
Okay. Um. I'm still gonna vote yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
You know, the Anovia Foundation has an impeccable uh reputation in the community and um, you know, I think that our finance director made some really good points. And I think the prudent thing would be to wait until the project completion, so I'm gonna vote no.
Counselor Duquette?
I would also have to say I would like to wait, so I would vote no on this amendment, this motion.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Moving on to new business, item number eight, uh, geocaching policy and permitting process. Uh, council members, um, this is a pretty simple house cleaning, um, uh, issue in front of us here, um, basically just formalizes, uh, somebody's gonna go geo cash uh, something in our parks or on our property. Uh, it's not super complex in any way. Uh, establishes a permit process, a free permit to do that. Um, there's a uh information in the agenda packet. Um, if there is need for any council discussion, uh, happy to do that at this time. Any council members want to discuss this policy?
Mr. Mayor, I just had one comment.
Go ahead.
I looked at the application for the geocaching. I think that would be great. I don't know if it needs to be written in there, but I'd like the environment to be kept in mind that um wildlife and plants were respected in this. And I was reading up on geocaching. It sounds like fun. But um finding a spot near trails instead of of um creating what they call geo trails that they go romping through other areas. And many people would do that and create trails that are not in existence. That would be my only interest.
Thank you, Councilwoman Duquette. Uh, that might be able to be something we work on and rendition too. But um, this was just the first one to make sure we have some formality to the process right now rather than just going out there haphazardly. Um, any other council discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor, not really a discussion, but um uh historically, um, when we're going through items, usually the presentations are up on the boards for the public to follow along and also for council to follow along. And I think um on our last item, that might have helped solve the confusion there a little bit. So um, I don't know who normally runs that or if some of that's you running that or whomever. But um, that would be helpful, I think, to the public and counselors.
Appreciate that, Councilwoman Rule, and uh, sorry for that omission. It was not intentional. Um, uh, we will try to do better. Anything, any other comment related to geocaching? Uh, any members from the public want to uh wish to speak on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution adopting the geocaching policy and permitting process.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Dick.
Second.
By Councilman Schreiber. So roll call vote.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you. Next on new business, uh, item eight B, Little Sand Creek Water Treatment Plant Rehabilitation Project. Uh, city staff seeks approval for the preliminary design for the Little Sand Creek Water Treatment Plant Rehabilitation Project and authorize authorization to finalize the design and advertise for bids. This time I will yield the floor to construction manager Holly Ellis.
Hi, and we have uh Rich Boudet here at our water treatment um plant operator.
I told you I'd be back. So um, Little Sand Creek Treatment Plant is um aging. It was uh first constructed in roughly uh nineteen sixty. In ninety six, there was extensive uh upgrades. We're kind of approaching that point now where we need to do some uh, some serious upgrades. Uh, there there's actually a lot more than what we're asking for now. This is kind of the initial. Um, the dam is in really bad shape. Uh, we need to really look at that. That'll be another project. This project was brought to um Keller and Associates and they did a they they spent a lot of time with us uh going over different plans and different um items that we had identified as potential problems within the treatment plant. Um, things that um you could visibly see, and I think we have some pictures that we're gonna show you of some of the the walls. Some of the walls are failing. Um, I don't know if we want to get into that right now or not, but um.
Yeah, I can jump into what our improvements are and uh you can highlight some of the things that we'll be working on. So on our, at the um Filter Bay, which is actually on the exterior of the building, the um, I'm sorry, Filter Bay is inside the building. Uh, right now, those are concrete walls. We're gonna put a coating on them to help extend their lifespan and to prevent water from seeping um through through those walls. It'll just be a good, good proper uh maintenance on those filter bays. Um, on the roof drain, so that top picture there, right now, we don't have anything to route that roof drainage away from the building. So you can see that that paint is starting to peel up and that exterior coating is starting to fail. So what we're hoping to do this fall is construct some gutters and downspouts and resurface those CMU um blocks. Um, we have a, hopefully, if we get good bids, we can also uh repaint that wall so to help clean it up. And then the last item, um, those bottom pictures there, those are the sediment basins. Those are outside, so they're exposed to the elements. Um, that concrete is starting to fail particularly on the corners. So we're looking to spot repair the corners with latex mortar. There's also some cracks that they're gonna crack seal. And the sediment basin also shares a wall in the basement, so they'll take that cracked ceiling and they'll also um repair the the basement walls while they're on this project. If you wanna add anything there.
Yeah, so some of the issues with the filter uh walls, the water is migrating through from the filters to the exterior wall. And when we have weather like this, we all know what happens. That water's gonna freeze. It's gonna break that wall. It's gonna start breaking away. So part of the project is, is we line the interior walls with a liner, then the water can't migrate through. We stop that uh damage from occurring, uh, which hopefully the plant will last another, you know, thirty years.
So um, schedule this project is in our water fund, so it's budgeted for in the twenty four, twenty twenty four budget. Uh, the construction, we're hoping to offer the contractor two windows. They could either work in the spring or the summer. Um, that flexibility helps us get contractors, get good bids. Um, the only time period that we wouldn't allow them to work is in the summer months while our water usage is high. When they're doing the um Filter Bay lining, we won't be able to operate this plant. So we'll take that plant offline and be fully reliant on our lake plant during that time.
There is one struggle in, um, you know, earlier you were discussing Great Northern as a project. Um, we have coal tar line pipe. Um, and when we're running Sand Creek and or when Sand Creek's off during the summer, we're running solely on lake plant, our water quality uh somewhat diminishes when it's lake plant only going through that coal tar line pipe. I know that's on the water master plan is to repair that line, just kind of a thing for you to think about as projects come up. You'll probably hear that at some point.
Unless there are any questions, this is the requested action.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman Schreiber.
So this is kind of just for my own amateur curiosity, but I noticed it says um filter media to be removed by owner. And I'm just kind of curious, what type of filter media are we working with? And are we gonna reuse it or are we gonna bring a new filter media? And you know, is there, I'm sure there's a plan in place and how all that's.
That's a great question. Um, so the filter media, it's uh cold, it's um anthracite on the top and sand on the bottom. So it's a double layer.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the anthracite is pretty much at the end of life.
Mm-hmm.
So it's kind of a, kind of an opportune time for us to remove that anyways. And we have the new anthracite sitting at Sand Creek right now. So the only thing we would need to do is buy sand. A couple of years ago, they didn't purchase the sand. Um, but the we can buy that and we can add that to the project. But it's it's a really good opportunity for us to make the modifications to the walls before we put the new, the new media in.
Yeah, that's great. And that answers the next question I had already. So um, the other question I had uh was sort of answered earlier, I believe, in the introduction section. But uh, it says coordinate work in accordance with specs. And I was just wondering if the city has their own specs for this epoxy coating or if it's Anderson, is it Anderson's the company? Keller is the company. Uh, if Keller, we're gonna be working off their specs. And then if we have a third party that's gonna be inspecting that and making sure that it's up to spec, if that's Keller that's gonna be doing that work.
There's a couple of different specs. When it comes to um the water industry, uh, there's um uh NSF sixty and sixty one rules. So any chemical or any product that comes into contact with the drinking water has to meet that NSF sixty or sixty one criteria. So that would be the one criteria. It's not set by us. It's set by um NSF and it's also a AWWA standard, American Water Works Association standard. Um, they provide us with pretty much any and every standard that we would need in the job that we do.
Right. And that's then accomplished by the manufacturer of the epoxy?
Yes, and there's like extensive uh thing criteria that they have to meet to meet the NSF sixty and sixty one uh criteria.
Sure. And is there specs associated with the application of it then too?
Yes. I I don't know what that is. Do you?
There are, and I'll just add that uh for this project during construction, we have Keller and Associates that did the design. And we have, um, we're going to engage them in construction so that they are making sure that everything is done in accordance with those plans. So our crews will be out there working closely with the contractor. And then as needed, the engineer will also pop out on site to oversee what they need.
Perfect. Thanks.
Any other questions from council? Any matters, uh, members of the public wish to comment on this matter?
No, Mr. Mayor.
I would entertain a motion for approval of the preliminary design for Little Sand Creek Water Treatment Plant Rehabilitation Project and authorize to finalize the design and advertise for bids.
So moved.
Hi.
Welcome.
Mark paper seasons.
Okay, I can second.
Uh, it was moved by Councilman Schreiber, seconded by Councilwoman Duquette. Um, this will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Rule? I just wanted to say that I appreciate the pictures. That's really helpful for, I think, the public and for us to just really see what's going on. Um, yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Thanks, folks.
Thank you.
Um, next item under new business, item eight C, GGLO contract. Um, no action on this item. I just want to provide informational update regarding the agreement for professional services related to downtown building design guidelines and the implementation, implementation of the downtown waterfront conceptual design. So um, about three hours after sitting in the mayor's seat, I became aware um, that the night I became mayor, um, uh, contract was executed uh by the former mayor and the former city administrator in the amount of seventy four thousand five hundred dollars to uh implement GGLO uh to proceed with a fairly lengthy scope of work uh that is related to the downtown waterfront design competition and various elements of it. Upon uh becoming aware of that, um, I visited with Heather Upton, who's sort of managing that. Um, I was unaware that this contract was signed. I think council was unaware this contract was signed. So I took some steps. Um, the first was to visit with Heather and then to visit with GGLO. Um, they were great. Um, I have great respect for their work and their capabilities. But um, my concern was that uh in the scope of work for this uh contract that was signed, they have uh three concurrent outreach projects, three simultaneous um workshops, surveys, uh, and a lot of other elements that in my mind um, would be a little too much for the public while we're currently trying to adopt the comprehensive plan. So in order not to um spread the public's attention too thin, I asked them if they'd be uh open to pausing this, which they were very graceful. Um, so at this point, uh, this contract is gonna be paused, has been paused and informed the Historic Arts and Culture Commission. Um, they were planning on starting this work last week. Um, and once the comp plan gets adopted, there are a number of elements in this contract that are really, really valuable, I think, especially as it relates to the historic uh district and formation of that and some code work and zoning work. Um, GGLO is very happy to pick it up uh as amended. Uh, once we get through that comp plan of downtown as the priority uh action out of it. And uh, I'll be amending this contract to remove things, maybe such as infrastructure analysis for five thousand five hundred, public involvement for twenty thousand, um, reimbursable expenses for seven thousand and really just try to use them for the designed guidelines and the zoning code recommendations. So really trying to pare this seventy four thousand five hundred dollar uh contract down significantly. Um, so with that, I I really just wanted to bring it to your attention so it wasn't done in the dark. And um, let's council have any questions regarding that?
I do have a question. Um, Mr. Mayor, uh, the y- you indicated you intend to uh possibly take out the twenty thousand dollar public involvement component. Um, I know that public involvement is kind of the catchphrase of of twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. Uh, would would we still engage in public involvement in the development of new code language regarding historic preservation downtown building heights? These are really important things. Um, the the GGLO uh design competition, as as many presentations as there were, they weren't actually all that publicly engaging. There were more presentations to the jury, which had four members out of eight, I think, were Sandpoint residents. But the public's, I I believe, ready to engage on advancing specifically the um, you know, there were a lot of contentious things in that plan, but I think something that united our community out of that plan was desire to preserve our historic downtown core and look at things like building heights, uh, building design guidelines. And that's really what this contract was all about, was it um implementing the what our, a year ago, right about now, these were the things that the previous council said, this is what we want to get out of this design competition is actionable, implementable, code amendments, code changes. Um, I'm just wondering if we take out public engagement now, it will seem like maybe we get code, you know, recommended code changes brought to us here in a few months that haven't gone through the the public engagement process. So I'm wondering what the council thinks, what you think about the, why would we take public engagement out of this contract?
Sure. Um, the first and foremost, because I, you know, the reason I mention that is because I'm uh highly sensitive to the uh numbness that sometimes occurs when spending taxpayer dollars. Um, we've had many successful public engagement, in-house public engagement efforts over the years. Uh, I'm not thrilled, as you mentioned, with some of the consultant-based public engagement uh process. But I think more importantly, Councilman Welker, is that what GGLO brings to the table here and and this, I don't want to get really into the weeds right now, but um the the tactics used to create a defensible um historic district and get that implemented are really critical to then supporting, that supporting uh future zoning and even design review. One of the few areas you can really legally have a design review committee um is is through a historic district. So they have incredible skills with that. Uh, they have incredible skills um and knowledge working in Idaho on historic preservation. So um, I'm not gonna throw the baby out with the bathwater, but I certainly want to relook it. I wasn't a party to this contract. It's negotiation, the elements. Uh, I believe fully in a very robust, very thorough, very engaged process where the public can give us feedback and that we can incorporate that into the zone changes. So I'm I'm supportive of a lot of it. It just um, it uh, there there's elements I want to um look at more closely. And most importantly, um, I I don't want to concurrently run a comp plan uh working session, public hearing, while the public's also distracted or confused, maybe potentially, maybe not, by a public outreach effort with zoning uh downtown. So I really prefer to to proceed uh orderly comp plan. uh orderly comp plan than into zoning and such forth. So those are my thoughts. Any other council comments on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Um, I would just reiterate my comments from before that I think what the public's really asking for are these code amendments. Um, they were presented with a timeline that would happen in April. Um, I think we have a pretty intelligent um group of Sandpoint residents. Um, and um, I think they are probably far more interested in code changes that had teeth than in lingering on the comp plan, as I stated earlier. So I'm a bit disappointed that we will um probably be taking Amy's time away from code change and um spending a lot of her efforts on comp plan um and not moving forward with what I feel the public has been asking for for a year now.
I appreciate those comments, Councilwoman Rule. I don't know how we can determine that this is the public's number one goal until we have a comprehensive.
Not say that.
Councilman Rule, please. Uh, let me finish. I'll give you time. Um, until we have an adopted comprehensive plan and what I'm for proposing takes no time away from me. Amy, if you can complete the comprehensive plan in uh, one meeting, uh, we'll be done uh after advertisement for hearing. So I don't see this as a pause. And what I heard on the campaign trail is people are pretty confused about all the different projects going on. I'm trying to create an orderly, straightforward process that the public's bandwidth can absorb and participate in. So that's that's my perspective on it. Appreciate your comments. Um, any other comments on this?
Mr. Mayor, yeah, I think I concur with Counselor Welker and Counselor Rule as well. And I do understand what you're saying in terms of the comp plan. I guess my hope for this body would to be to work through the comp plan, get that finished, go to adoption. Um, I believe I was the one that directed staff uh with these workshops to get the public engagement that we didn't necessarily get during the design competition. I know we have a lot of our community members uh were concerned with building heights, with zoning uh specifically with historic preservation. Uh, just a caveat, I can tell you after this weekend, as being an owner of a historic, two historic buildings and a historic home, I probably would have taken a bulldozer through all three of them to get some heat in my place and not have frozen bathrooms and have radiant floor heating and not have water coming through. So I do think these are very pertinent to the public, and I'd like to get these done as quickly as we can when we get finished with the comp plan approvals.
Thank you, Councilman Dick. I hear you, and it is a priority for me. I will move as fast as I feel the public can handle it.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead. Any other?
I'm just sort of spitballing here, but is there any way that we can move forward with both at the same time, like maybe start with that part of the comp plan and use that to educate the G G L O uh experts working in the background so that as soon as the comp plan is adopted, we already have the code uh changes written?
Uh, Councilman uh Schreiber, I think uh the code changes will take a public process um feedback. Um, uh, we have to look at creating a historic district, uh, have to take action on that more than likely, um, if it's desired. Um, so I I think uh we can move uh concurrently and very speedily on this. Um, but I I'm I'm not I I'm not in favor of of having two processes move at once. I I know people who only have one night a week to dedicate to a public engagement meeting or track along, and I don't think it's fair to the public to have two things going on at once because there's little time for the public to engage as it is. So I really want to limit the public uh their focus on one thing at a time, comp plan. Hopefully, we can get that done quickly. And uh, then we'll jump right into whatever the priorities of the comp plan are.
All right, thanks.
Any members of the public, uh, if there's no further council comment, any members of the public wish to comment on this matter?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, one moment. Hi, Hutchinson.
Hi, Clay. Can you hear us?
He's right here.
Oh, sorry. You're on.
Uh, resident of uh Sandpoint, uh, thank you. Um, bizarrely, I'm sitting back there, even though it sounds like maybe you're in disagreement. I think you actually are all more in agreement than than might be apparent. So the few comments I want to make is actually in support of just about everything you said. Thank you, Mayor, for suspending this contract. I was uh stunned that a seventy-four thousand dollar contract got signed with no information and no I I was I I was amazed. Um, it it kind of is like how the design challenge came about and um there was, other than the stipends, which was in the manual, there was not a single discussion over what that project was going to cost, public discussion. Maybe I'm wrong on that. I've watched the tapes. I sat on those meetings and that ended up being a three hundred and fifteen thousand plus project. And we had no public discussion of what that was cost. There was discussion among the council about what are we going to get for this? And I think that uh, to a large extent, um, uh, the council and public got led down a down a rose, rose, rose path. And uh, the trio that did that is no longer here. But we have that plan that, you know, whether it's good or bad, doesn't matter. We have it. You're going to work forward on that. I think the uh Council Rule, your your comments about the public does want to see, we've been hearing that. That's what why that design challenge came about, about some um, you know, some code changes. But the list that was in this agreement is insane. I mean, there's, there's a ton of stuff in here that I think you rightly pointed out that is is not the priority. And uh, and and some of that assumes that we've had discussions over, you know, do we need a design review board, for instance? You know, there are a lot of implications when you set up a a a city design review board. Design is very subjective. A lot of pitfalls on that, and there needs to be a lot of discussion before paying someone seventy-four thousand dollars and that may be a line item. But you're correct in in dissecting some of those line items. And Counselor Wackler, you're correct in saying we need that public engagement because we did not have that in the, as much as you push for, we didn't have it in design challenge and and we need that. But there are a lot of ways to get all that accomplished without hiring someone from outside like a Phil Cushman, who's in the agreement for the design challenge. Who's Phil Cushman? He was hired. We never heard from him. We have no idea what he was hired for, what he was paid even if even if even if that happened. And so I would say if you if you think you need consultants to run some of this stuff, we ran a a a code change, Sand Creek code change. You ran it with the competent city staff we had and a lot of public engagement. Took about a year and it was passed in March of uh twenty-two, I believe. So we can do this as a community. We can have that engagement. We can get all these things out. But if and if you feel the need to spend money, which is often possible, let's see if we can spend it inside of Sandpoint and not keep exporting our funds out to these consultants from out and around when we have plenty of capable talent within our own town and with our professionals, our staff, our city staff. And if they're too burdened because they're they're always, you know, there's a lot of work, there there are plenty of people in the private sector.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you. Thank you much, Clay. Thank you for your comments. Any other public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, there is no action on that that item, so um uh, would the council like to take a brief recess?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Do I I bang this? Recession?
Public has been waiting now.
We're now reconvening for a break from a break, uh recess. The next item on the uh agenda under new business, council will discuss and consider uh eight D Selkirk Fire Joint Powers Agreement. Cities continued participation in the Joint Powers Agreement with Sagel and Westside Fire Districts for the coordination and cooperation and provision of fire services. I think it's um, it's a bit unfortunate that we're at this position um and that this process didn't begin a little bit earlier. Um, but uh, we're at where we're at. I want to make it clear to the public and uh the union and all of our uh board members out there that um, this is coming to a head because we have uh union negotiations coming up. And then we have the 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 term ending on the Joint Powers Agreement. So um, I know there's been a lot of interest and a lot of comment out there on this item. Uh, I'm hopeful that we can um avoid a rush and a rushed decision and that we might have time to pause uh for the community to discuss and present the facts and perspectives on this. Um, in order to do that, there's a couple of things we would probably need, which is one to um extend um the term and uh, the the details of the Joint Powers Agreement to allow for that discussion to uh continue as well as some modification on the uh union negotiation to again give us time to do both of these things. Um, with that, um, are there any council members who would care to um provide any discussion on this item at this time?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I would agree with you wholeheartedly. Um, this has moved very quickly due to the sequencing of the J P A and then the collective bargaining agreement. Uh, I've had an amazing time speaking with some of the fire uh folks today. Clint Franks is one of them. We had a great conversation as well. Uh, who has agreed to push back the collective bargaining agreement if we were able to have a public workshop. I've spoken to Chief Gilchrist as well. Um, who seems to be in favor as well as some of our city staff. This is a very multifaceted um joint powers agreement here. There's a lot at stake for everyone, everyone's uh community. I don't know if the public, as fast as this moves, understands all of the intricacies of this, uh, the services that are rendered outside of Sandpoint. Uh, what's good in terms of our level of service right now, what's good for our level of service for our Sandpoint residents? We as counselors have to look at this through many different lenses. Uh, one of those lenses is the fiduciary responsibility not only specific to Sandpoint, but specific to Sandpoint as the corporation as well. We've been doing this for a number of years. Uh, we've got a three hundred page study. I'm not sure if the public was made aware of this. Uh, in my talks with Mr. Franks and Gavin and the mayor and some of our city staff, sounds like we might have some agreement to hold a public work to table this tonight, have a public workshop to be held in the next fourteen days uh with all of the stakeholders. Right now, we I see we have a number of stakeholders in the room right now that are only going to be prepared to give about three minutes of their time as we try to make a decision on something as big as the Joint Powers Agreement here, where we could bring all the stakeholders to the table. We have a brand new newly elected representative for the J P A who's been on here for about two weeks as well, too. We've got some great historic um context to given by Counselor Rule. Uh, Counselor Spiro is not here with us this evening. Um, I would like that group to have all of the stakeholders do it publicly. And I'd like to have more than just our J P A representative. I would certainly like to be there and invite any of the counselors to be there as well. Um, if anyone on this board sees fit as well.
Thank you, Councilman Dick. Any other council comment?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say that I too am I have caught myself way up to speed. It might surprise you. I have read most of that Fitch operational study. I have also replied to many emails and I thank you all very much for sharing your passion, your dedication and what it is you're looking for. And yeah, they said negotiations could be held up and they too want workshops to settle things and get what's best for the firefighters and for the community and the county. So, yeah, I I think that's a great idea. Even though everybody's been sitting here for a long time waiting to speak, but it'd be, you you'd have more than three minutes perhaps.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, any other council comments?
Mr. Mayor, um, I would just like to point out that um, when this study was completed, it was presented to council. It was presented in a public open setting, so it has been out there and accessible for the public. Um, I have no opinion about that, but I just wanted to let you know that I'm kind of the historical body up here and um it was presented and out there and it's out there again and um if you can't find it, we can get it to you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rule. Any other council comment at this time? I have a quick question for legal. Um, if such a workshop were to convene, would you have a recommended um uh either limitation of board members or council forums or uh if we if we have it a full-blown council workshop with J P A board members, um, we advertise that as a
So if you have if you have more um commissioners or council members, if you have enough to create a quorum for any one of your bodies, it needs to be a public meeting and then all of your elected officials would be invited to participate in the workshop. So you would notice it up just like any other public meeting and provide space for that to occur in a workshop setting. You could do it in the form of just having representatives from each board and that would not be that would not require a public meeting setting, but it sounds like the important piece here is to get public input and have public involvement in the process. So it would make the most sense to just do a tri-party joint public workshop with all of the governing boards.
Thank you, Fonda. Any other council uh comment before we take uh public comment on this matter?
Um, just one more comment, Mr. Mayor, um, that um, because all of our meetings are recorded on YouTube, I did go back and um rewatched some of the Fitch study when it was presented. I do not remember the date off the top of my head. I'll have to go back and look at that, but maybe we can post that for anybody who chooses to watch that original presentation as opposed to reading through um quite a lengthy study and maybe not understanding all the nuances of it. So um, maybe we can get back to the public and Melissa can help me a little bit with that date. So.
Thanks for your um historical references, Councilwoman Roll. Appreciate that. Um, at this time, we would take uh public comment. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this matter?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, one moment. Clint Frank?
Good evening, Mr. Frank.
Good evening, I'm Eric, Councilman. I'm happy to hear uh that we're going to put a pause on uh what's a very important issue for the community. I know you've gotten a lot of notes uh and emails from me because this means a lot to me. I've been community member, firefighter for twenty-two years. Um, so I'm just going to read something that I I've shared with you, want to share with the public. So it was brought to our attention um, that City Sandpoint is potentially dropping out of the Selkirk J P A. We feel this would be a huge step backwards to the service we provide to the communities we serve. We strongly recommend further discussion with cooperating agencies and your firefighters so we can better understand this impact has on fire, rescue and EMS services. The community currently has a better equipped fire department since Selkirk Fire Forum is a G P A in two thousand fourteen. This uh current system provides a coordinate response plan through the nine one nine one one call center that supports firefighter and civilian safety by sending the right resources immediately. This all leads to better outcomes on large-scale calls. A couple of quick examples. We have a residential structure fire. You're going to get three engines and a duty chief. A commercial downtown fire, you'll get four engines uh and a duty chief. A terrible car accident uh will get three engines and a duty chief. So this list goes on. To move back to three independent departments with mutual aid requests as your form of response plans is probably a fifteen to twenty-year step backwards. The city of Sandpoint currently does not have volunteers, so we can't handle those large scale uh large-scale calls just with the two or three firefighters that will have on duty. Uh, we'll ta- we'll depend on mutual aid and mutual aid is definitely always delayed. I know you've heard a bit about automatic aid, but automatic aid has never been agreed on between uh Bonner County uh fire agencies in my twenty-two-year career. It's always been mutual aid. Uh, we're surprised our chief would support weakened response plans to to the community as a form of best practice and leave the residents of Sagel and Westside without a chief in direction. The firefighters believe in the G P A. And with the right leadership, we can accomplish the objectives of why we came together in the first place. It's the better serve of the public. We finally have an opportunity to see where this partnership can go. And to deviate from this now seems like a bad plan. Our employees' equipment are inter- intermingled, essentially gut our nine-one-one response plans. Other agencies would be left without a chief and our current problem of staff retention would probably increase. I'm happy to hear we're going to slow down and discuss what the next G P A could look like collectively. Let's sit down with our partners, Sagel and Westside, your line crews and the public. We have time to get this done right with collaboration and teamwork. The current G P A contract is not up until June sixteenth uh twenty twenty-four. I think the idea of getting this done right now uh and rushed was somewhat inherited from your last administration. Um, so on that, we support the fact that you guys are putting the pause on the brakes and hopefully come to some good solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frank.
Merlin Glass?
Hello, Mr. Glass. Uh, congratulations to the new people on the board. Uh, my name is Merlin Glass. I live in Dover and uh in full disclosure, I'm on the city council, although I'm here as a private citizen. Um, my background, uh, I spent thirty-six years in the fire service, uh, seven years uh teaching incident command and seven years as a planning section chief for FEMA. Um, so what I really came to talk about, first off, let me say that the J P A, I think, is the best vehicle for utilizing resources in organization. Okay? It has a lot of potential. My passion right now is advocating for staffing levels. Uh, presently, um, I provided you with I had intended to just read off this and get out, right? But I provided you all with uh what I have here. You guys have the right to decide um how many people are are on an engine. Um, that's me, that's a decision you're capable of making. Um, but what you're not, don't have a right to uh advocate is What you're not, don't have a right to advocate is the safety of the firefighters. Presently, every fire engine out there, the class A engine, all all have potential for four people to fully utilize that that equipment. I don't know if the public knows that on any given day, we only have eight firefighters that that cover these three districts, all the way from Le Cleed, all the way to Saguil, eight. To put out a fire in this building right here, you'd need everyone, everybody in this room to participate. That's that's how tough the job is. So advocating for their safety is something that I think everybody can sign on with. And part of the JPA, and I've attended all the the JPA meetings for the last year. And to my chagrin, there hasn't been a whole lot of people lifting up out of their seats, talking about staffing levels. We have one firefighter on Westside Fire District. Goes out alone, car wreck, house fire, doesn't matter. That's unacceptable. Okay, you can't have a crew of one and firefighting is a team sport. So I would, in any workshop you have, staffing levels has to be an ingredient because staffing levels cost money and that's where you guys come in as well as all the other districts, Westside included. There's levees going to be established, coming out for a vote in the future. An advertising campaign to educate the public. But you guys have to be educated as to as to what it takes to put out the a fire, car wreck, heart attack, whatever. You can't do it with just one person. It's not fair. And I think probably I'll get some agreement with the firefighters on that. But I spent thirty six years in the fire service. I counted all the years up. It came to fifty years that I've been looking at this stuff. And I'm very disappointed when I see two people going out in a fire engine, one person going out in a fire.
Mr. Glass, can you wrap it up?
So I think the JPA is a good vehicle to bring it all together.
Thank you for your comments.
Michael Gao?
Hello, Mr. Gao.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I hope all of you received my email. I did get some responses back. I'm here to speak in favor of continuing the JPA contract. So I I don't want to reiterate what I already said in the email. If you didn't get it, please let me know. And if you have any questions, please feel free to respond. As my email stated, I believe that the JPA is a successful endeavor, not only for firefighter safety as Mr. Glass just discussed, but also for responses with apparatus and personnel. You know, as Clint talked about, you know, there's a difference between, you know, what responses we get with the JPA and what mutual aid is. So mutual aid isn't a guarantee. Okay, and you know, so the city of Sandpoint has a minimum of two firefighters on duty each day. And, you know, right now, we're as, you know, Mr. Glass talked about, we have a potential of eight firefighters coming to this scene with three to four different pieces of apparatus. And that increases firefighter safety rather than two people trying to figure out what is going on and how to mitigate that incident. Sorry, I lost my notes. You know, so unfortunately, the firefighter, the the fire department isn't a very good sales team, right? You know, we don't go out and advocate the things that we're doing to the public, but I would guarantee that if you went and told the public that you're going to take away firefighters that are responding to their house, they wouldn't be supportive of it. Right? So think about those people that are electing you and, you know, making that decision of what would you want to come to your house? Would you want four fire apparatus and eight people or hopefully more? Or would you want to have two people? Okay. And I'm happy to hear that you guys are considering, you know, tabling this and and talking about a workshop. You know, because one of the things that I had a hard time with is was there any discussion in the JPA and saying this doesn't work for the city any longer? I know a certain point in time, you know, it talked about finances and, you know, it's no longer financially a savings for the city. And as I said in my email, not everything can be a saving. Sometimes we spend a little bit more for the good of everything, the good of our our taxpayers and our businesses. But the last thing that I have to say is it's important to discuss those problems and try to come up with a solution, right? So if my wife got tired of picking up my socks all the time and automatically just said, I'm done, right? That wouldn't go over real well, would it? Okay, so let's sit down, have these discussions and see if we can come to a common goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gao.
Geraldine Lewis?
Evening, Ms. Lewis.
Good evening, Lewis. Mr. Mayor and city council members, thank you. I'm Geraldine Lewis, Chair of the Saguil Fire Board of Commissioners. And I have a short message on behalf of the five commissioners Jim Woodward was here and had to leave regarding the JPA. As you know, it's made up of three agencies. Saguil, as the largest district, covers forty eight percent of the JPA budget. Saguil commissioners are in favor of keeping the JPA intact. But we realize there are some inherent problems with the contract with the HR and the billing and the administration of it. But we feel that the benefits far outweigh the difficulties. The district wide unification is not only better and safer for the firefighters, but it's also safer for all those who live in the area. This is actually great timing for discussing the JPA contract. Except for renewal, you have some new council members and new administration. We do realize and hope that there's possibility for improving it and making it perhaps less cumbersome to actually operate. But we think the foundation of it is sound and we hope that sounds like what we're hoping for is a workshop and discussion and maybe that's what I'm hearing from all of you. So that's positive. That's all I had. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Will Gadsby?
Good evening, Mr. Gadsby.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you. I'm William Gadsby. I'm not a city resident. I live in Westside. I retired two weeks ago from the Westside Fire Commission. I was the chairman of the board. I served about fifteen years. I've been a JPA representative since Westside joined the JPA a few years ago. Tonight, I speak as a private citizen. I do not represent the Westside Board. Our chairman was unable to attend tonight. As a JPA board in the past, we worked together to examine the issues and the problems and we found solutions to the problems. It was a bumpy road. It was really rough in the beginning and over the years, it's gotten a lot smoother and it's working well. All the decisions were made by the three agency representatives with approval of our respective boards and we were the three voting members on the JPA. Nobody else. I strongly urge you to continue participation in the JPA. Our crews train together. Clint covered that pretty well. They back each other up on all types of emergencies. We spent years building a strong regional department where in the past it was everybody for themselves, basically. Westside and Saguil are working on levees to hire up to ten more firefighters. Sandpoint's continued JPA participation is critical to the success of addressing our manpower and staffing shortages. Should the voters approve our manpower increase, the city will benefit tremendously from a stronger Selkirk workforce. Thank you.
Mr. Gadsby, can I just ask you a quick question? The levy that you spoke of, is there any detail on what cycle that would run in and when that might be expected?
Well, we were hoping to put it on the May ballot. That's possibly bumped out to November now. If it was passed in November, it's my understanding that it would go on the following June tax bill. And the money from that would not go to the districts until the following January. So we couldn't actually get boots on the ground and hire people without the funding. It's a long process, so. That's where it's at.
I think that's January twenty twenty six, if I'm following.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, that is all who have signed up to speak on this matter.
Excellent. I just want to say I really sincerely appreciate the flexibility that the union is offering to give us some time to work through this and discuss it and present the facts and perspectives. I hope to leave that in a very respectful and conciliatory way. With that, council care to make a motion on this item at this time, I believe. The motion could be amended to simply direct City Hall, myself, to initiate those workshops. Removed.
Would we, I'm sorry, point of order. Do we need to table this? The action you are going to take, I believe, is the motion to not make the underlying decision, but to establish the workshops.
That's the motion, right? So so moved?
I think her question is, do you need to table the underlying action item?
Yes, I'm just trying to pull up the agenda here.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Just as an informational point on the agenda, it was a, the agenda item was a discussion on continued participation in the agreement. It was noted as an actual item, just in case council wished to make, take action. There isn't any action required.
Excellent. So no action required, but I do hear a motion. And was there a second? I'm sorry.
A second.
Motion by Dick, second by Duquette to direct the mayor to initiate regional or multi-party workshop between the various entities in the JPA, including the union. Any discussion on that motion?
Mr. Mayor, can I just thank the firemen and women? Thank you for what you do.
Further discussion, I want to echo that. Thanks for putting your lives on the line every day. Thank you, everyone, for your grace, the time. I will need a couple of things. Depending on how this time time plays out, this timeline, we will need a written formal acknowledgement that the collective bargaining agreement can be pushed forward into the year. But we can get with the union to do that. So this will be.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to, yeah, thank everybody who's reached out to me this week and everybody that's taken the time to get me up to speed. I do take my appointment to the JPA very seriously and I'm working very hard to learn everything I can about all the inner workings. And what I've found so far is opportunity and I'm optimistic that we're going to find a way to make this work.
I don't believe this is roll call vote, so all those in favor?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
If we could please go ahead with the roll call vote, it'd be appreciated. Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
No.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you. The final item on the agenda this evening is an executive session. I'll entertain a motion to convene an executive session pursuant to Idaho Code Section seventy four, two oh six, one F and J for the purpose of communicating with city legal and council to discuss the legal ramifications and legal options for pending litigation or controversy not yet being litigated but imminently likely to be litigated and to consider label contract matters and I believe the potential acquisition of real estate.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to convene an executive session. All those in favor? It's a roll call vote, sorry.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Motion passes. Everyone not participating in the executive executive session will now need to exit the city council chambers. And the Zoom meeting will now end.